We're going to get started. Thank you. The members will take their seats, we'll get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Keon Juro of Catalyst for Change Church. He is here today as a guest of Councilwoman Blackwell. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who has brought us thus far on the way, Thou who has by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in Thy path, we pray. May Your guiding hand bridge the gap that divides party lines, ideals, and factions to move our city forward with love, justice, and equity. Give us the power and potency to allow us to live up to the standard of truly being the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Protect our elected officials, our mayor, our city council president, city council members, law enforcement, firefighters, first responders, prison guards, domestic workers, and all citizens of our city. May love conquer hate, hope conquer fear, good conquer evil, civility conquer debauchery, unity conquer division, and give us peace in the midst of the storm. Make us one Philadelphia, a city where black and white, rich and poor, liberal and conservative, white collar and blue collar, young and old can stand together in the unity of our God, who has not given us the spirit of fear, but love, power, and a sound mind. May we be better, bolder, and more bountiful, standing on the truth of Your everlasting word that no weapon formed against us shall ever prosper. We ask these in the name of the One who is, and was, and is to come. He who was in the beginning before the beginning began and is in the ending after the ending will end, that at that name every knee must bow and every tongue must confess that God is in fact God of all, the matchless, marvelous, mighty name of the Master Himself. We pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much for those inspiring words. Council, be at ease. Thank you. Again, thank you so much Pastor, for those inspiring words. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 2nd, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 2nd, 2019 be approved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All there in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 2nd, 2019 stands approved. Our next order of business is request a leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time, I would dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more so than that, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Council President, I appreciate it greatly. We also have some special guests here, and I would like to recognize them now. They are professional fellows from the country of Nepal, Pakistan, and India. They are guests of the United States Department of State, part of a program that promotes mutual understanding between our countries. And I would like to have them stand up, and actually, I'm going to mention their names, or there's four of them. Ms. Amadi Chada from the nation of India, Mr. Mohammed Usman from the country of Pakistan, and Ms. Subhan Napol from Nepal. And also Ms. Lakshmar Marajan from Nepal as well. And a nice round of applause for our guests.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to some and present to others some folks who are very, very special to me. We have forty-nine students from Adprima Schools, Overbrook Campus, and Mount Airy Campus. They're accompanied by three adults, two principals, and the CEO, Nia Blackwell. And I mention Nia specifically because many remember when she was lawyer in this city. She was lawyer to John Street when he was mayor. She was lawyer to the prison commissioner. And when she represented many prisons, she did so well, people wanted her to run for judge. But instead of running for judge, especially after the days of Lucian Blackwell, she decided to leave government altogether and become a CEO of a charter school that does better each and every year. So we're proud that they are here. They'll be in the caucus room after our session getting lunch. And I hope that those of you who remember Nia Blackwell, the apple of Luzai, will stop in and say hello, if you will. They are to my left in the balcony so that they could all stay together. And I'm just overjoyed to have them with us.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And welcome. We appreciate you being here today. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who presented a resolution recognizing the employees of the Philadelphia Department of Prisons. Would Commissioner Blanche Carney and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Taubenberger, and Councilman Johnson.
So, I think it might have been four years ago, there was an article done by The Inquirer about a budget hearing we had where I mentioned a guy from my neighborhood named Ray Ray. Ray Ray was a young man who, I would say, his parents, in effect, failed him, not providing the kind of guidance he needed to grow up straight like an arrow. I would then say the education, public education failed him because he could not read up to par by the time he was in the fourth grade. So he used to manufacture ways to get kicked out of class so he could play hooky, so he could do mischief. I think spirituality failed him because he wasn't guided by a different light that would prevent him morally from doing some of the heinous things he used to do. And all of us kind of feared and loved Ray Ray. But when Ray Ray went away to jail, it was a holiday in my neighborhood. Everybody was happy, talking about finally, we can get some peace. What often happens is when all of these institutions fail a young person, it is the correction officer's job to be that line. The line that should have been there at the dinner table in the family, the line that should have been there in the school where you learned how to play well with others. But these individuals, these professionals, have to dance a delicate balance of providing justice, keeping the public safe, and keeping themselves safe. Because after an eight-to-sixteen hour shift, they have to go back to their families, right? You can nod in the appropriate place, yes. Okay? And they cannot take their job home with them. And that is a delicate balancing act. I want to thank the President for, and Donna Reed Miller too, for appointing me to the Public Safety Committee. I think that's a cruel joke you play on freshmen. It's a lot of work if you take it up. But I had the opportunity to then learn about the correctional system. And at the time, what is it, seven prisons that were up there? Six? She whispered in my... Six prisons that were up on State Road. And I had the opportunity to go in all of them, including the House of Corrections, which we have now shut down. And I learned an appreciation for these professionals. They do far more than walk the tiers. They're social workers, they're dieticians, they are counselors, they're people who deal with medicines, they are people who deal with the safety of the individual while incusting. And I'm looking at you because I truly do appreciate what you do. And without further ado, recognizing the employees of the Philadelphia Department of Prisons for their professional contributions and services, and proclaiming the week of, May 6th to May 10th, 2019, as Correctional Employee Week in the City of Philadelphia.
Whereas more than twenty-four hundred Philadelphians work under an oath to uphold the city charter, the Pennsylvania Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States through their work at the Department of Prisons, and...
Whereas correctional officers, social workers, medical, maintenance, and administrative personnel work daily to provide dedicated service to our residents while ensuring the security and welfare of over four thousand inmates in the City of Philadelphia, and...
Whereas correctional employees carry out programs that encourage the dignity of those who are incarcerated and create an environment in which those who wish to make changes in their lives may become prospering members of their communities, and...
Whereas the correctional workers employed by Philadelphia's Department of Prisons strive to help those who will be released from city facilities to achieve successful reintegration into our communities as returning citizens, and...
Whereas, in 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation officially recognizing the first week in May as National Correctional Employees Week. It is called upon officials of state and local governments and all people of the United States to observe this week with their appropriate ceremonies, and...
Whereas the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers in their performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserves our utmost appreciation and admiration. Now therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes the employees of the Philadelphia Department of Prisons for their professional contributions and services and proclaims the week of May 6th through May 10th as Correctional Employee Week in the City of Philadelphia. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the employees of the Philadelphia Department of Prisons as evidence of this sincere respect and sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations.
Just one point of information. This is the first African-American female prison commissioner in the history of the City of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Council President, Councilman Jones, other esteemed council persons here joining me today, and most importantly, some of the staff that represent the Philadelphia Department of Prisons, inclusive of uniformed staff, correctional industries, vocational educators. We also have behavioral health, medical professionals here, our management IT systems, training academy. These folks represent the best of what occurs behind five major operating facilities located in the northeast portion of Philadelphia. We are residents of Philadelphia. We understand that this is a delicate balance in providing safety, security, for folks that find themselves detained in our facilities. But the best of a man is measured by how he treats his fellow man. And it's through the delivery of services, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week, twenty-four hour operation, that these dedicated folks that are joining me now and those that are in full operation in those departments and facilities on State Road, that we represent the City of Philadelphia and the best that it has to offer those that find themselves incarcerated. And it's with humble submission that I thank the Council for honoring and recognizing the work that we do as part of the public safety cluster. And staff behind me, and those maybe watching from the facilities, I applaud you because I could do this not independent of you. And I recognize and I acknowledge this day and every day your commitment to public safety. Thank you and God bless.
Council, be at ease. Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who presented a resolution on my behalf recognizing the Masterman School team. Would Brett Mandell and those accompanying him please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Greenlee, we have Councilman Taubenberger and Councilwoman Blackwell. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Council President Clark, it's nice to be able to repeat some things. And this is to recognize a great school in the City of Philadelphia. So this is a resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing Julia R. Masterman School Team for their 2019 Odyssey of the Mind state championship and wishing them success as world finalists at the Odyssey of the Mind international competition. Whereas Odyssey of the Mind is an international creative problem-solving competition that engages students in challenges involving a combination of engineering, art, and performance. And whereas Odyssey of the Mind has been encouraging students around the world to think outside the box, teaching students to work together as a team to solve challenging problems in a productive way since 1978. And whereas the Odyssey of the Mind teaches students how to think divergently by providing open-ended problem-solving, open-ended problems that appeal to a wide range of interests. Students learn how to identify challenges and to think creatively to solve those problems. They are free to express their ideas and suggestions without fear or criticism. Somehow, we don't get that right, I don't know. Anyway. And...
Whereas the Julia R. Masterman School Odyssey of the Mind team competed in the program's Division III, ninth through twelfth grades, in a problem called, quote, "O M E R to the rescue again," end quote. And whereas the problem challenges students to construct and drive an original vehicle that must fit into one of two small suitcases. The vehicle must be assembled to accomplish various creative rescues before being disassembled and repacked and then reassembled before participating in a heroes parade.
And whereas the Masterman School team comprises students from a number of Philadelphia public schools, including Masterman High School, tenth-grade student Drew Brown, Central High School, twelfth-grade student Tilly Donover, Masterman High School, twelfth-grade student Louise Iodicee. Was that right? Say it. Iodicee, Masterman High School, twelfth-grade student Abigail Layton, Science Leadership Academy, twelfth-grade student Sophia Powers, Central High School, tenth-grade student Ariel Weinbaum, and Central High School, twelfth-grade student Rose Weinbaum. The team is coached by parent Brett Mandell and by parent and pal elementary school teacher Chris Powers, and...
Whereas, after placing first in the southeastern Pennsylvania regional competition held at Pensbury High School on March the 2nd, 2019, the team placed in first place in the Pennsylvania State Finals held at Pocono Mountain East High School on April the 6th, 2019. Whereas, at the Pennsylvania State Finals, the team placed first in each of the competition's three scoring categories to best their rivals. The team has earned their trip to compete at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals to be held at Michigan State University May 22nd through 25th, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors and congratulates and recognizes the Julia R. Masterman School Odyssey of the Mind for the 2019 Odyssey of the Mind state championship and wishing them success in the world finalists at the Odyssey of the Mind international competition. And as a parent of a graduate of Masterman, I am also very, very, very proud and bring it home.
Be resolved further that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Julia R. Masterman School's Odyssey of the Mind team as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations so far and good luck in the future. Okay?
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Mandell for remarks.
Thank you so, so much for having us in today and for having us in in past years. We are thrilled to represent Philadelphia at World Finals. And let me tell you, this little dynasty in our nerd sport has represented you very well. They have brought home a second-place trophy, a third-place trophy, a fourth-place, or fifth-place mention, and a sixth-place mention. And hopefully this year, they'll continue to do that. This chamber has literally watched some of these people grow up. This will be the last time you'll see some of them, including my daughter, who is off to Brown, Abby Layton, who is off to Yale, Louise Iodicee, who is off to Pratt, Sophia Powers, who is off to Temple, and Tilly Donover, who is off to Penn. This is what happens when we support our public school students.
Thank you, Council, be at ease. Again, congratulations and thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Dom, who presented a resolution celebrating the seventy-first anniversary of the foundation of the State of Israel. Would Naomi Adler and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Dom, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman O, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Looks like we have everybody. All members of council. Please proceed, Councilman.
Celebrating the 71st anniversary of the foundation of the state of Israel. And whereas on the 14th of May, 1948, in Tel Aviv, David Ben-Gurion declared the establishment of the Jewish state in Palestine to be called Israel. Ben-Gurion would serve as the nation's first and longest-serving prime minister, and...
Whereas the creation of a Jewish homeland represented for many the endless countless years of oppression, particularly in eastern New York.
And whereas the Jewish community had made calls for a territorial Jewish state since at least the late 1800s in order to escape persecution, and...
Whereas in October 1946, following the devastation of the Second World War and particularly the Holocaust, President Truman declared the support of the United States for a Jewish state in Palestine.
In November of 1947, the United Nations General Assembly passed a resolution allowing for the establishment of a Jewish state.
Whereas this paved the way for the declaration of the establishment of the state of Israel the following May, and...
Whereas Philadelphia has been home to a thriving Jewish community since the late 17th century, and...
Whereas our city has long had a close relationship to Israel that extends beyond the traditional bonds between democratic nations.
We are connected by our shared values of diversity and equality, our shared commitment to education and innovation, and our shared passion for social and economic justice. We are both communities that face our own unique challenges but are committed to the basic principle of brotherly and sisterly love, and... Whereas the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia nurtures a dynamic and mutually beneficial relationship with Israel through the Philadelphia Netivot and Sedot-Negav partnership established in 1997.
Originally founded as a city of North African immigrants, Netivot has welcomed Russian-speaking and Ethiopian immigrants reflecting true diversity.
Over the past 20 years, the Jewish Federation has invested over $10 million in our partnership region while building a strong relationship that transcends dollars and capital projects.
The Jewish Federation continues to build the personal connections that have grown between the people of Philadelphia and Netivot and Sedot and Sedot-Negav, and... Whereas on May 9th, the city of Philadelphia will celebrate Israel's anniversary with a ceremonial flag-raising outside of the Municipal Services Building, to be followed by a celebration on the apron of the Municipal Services Building in which all invited. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that this body hereby acknowledges and celebrates the 71st anniversary of the foundation of the state of Israel. Congratulations, everybody.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Adler for remarks.
Thank you, Council President Clark, and thank you to Councilman Dom and all the members who joined the resolution today on what is called Yom HaAtzmaut, Israel's Independence Day. It is such an honor to mark Israel's 70th birthday, 71st birthday with you. And on behalf of the entire Jewish community in the greater Philadelphia area, I thank you for your constant support of our Jewish homeland and our local Jewish institutions, particularly at this time. While Israel is still a young nation, it represents a dream and a longing that Jews have had for thousands of years. The creation of the state of Israel in 1948 in the ancestral homeland of the Jewish people is, in short, a miracle. In its 71 short years, Israel has become a vibrant democracy with a thriving economy, all while remaining an open and welcoming place for all of you, people of all faiths, to gather and worship in holy and sacred sites. The city of Philadelphia has had a long, strong connection to Israel. And over the course of the last decade, the bonds have gone even stronger. Our flourishing business-to-business partnership have expanded mutual interests. More than $5 billion a year of commerce is going between Philadelphia and Israel every single year. We have mutual interests in developing renewable energy sources and of course, highly advanced healthcare. And last year, our own Philadelphia Orchestra traveled to Israel with the Jewish Federation for a series of unbelievable sold-out performances, deepening our relationship on an artistic level. And most importantly, we share a cherished commitment to equality and social justice, a desire to remain a city and a nation that welcomes immigrants and provides opportunities to all people who wish to seek a better life. Israel has overcome and continues to overcome enormous obstacles. Every day, Israelis face threats to their security and safety seeking cover in bomb shelters. And this is a way of life for many of the residences that we support. Here in the U.S., Jews face not only a disturbing rise in antisemitism, but also a rise in anti-Zionism, where protesters deny Jewish connections to their homeland and seek the elimination of this Jewish state entirely. Resolutions like the one we have today are very important, and they send a clear message that hate and antisemitism and anti-Zionism have no home here in Philadelphia. And the bonds we share with the Jewish homeland of Israel will remain strong and will continue to grow. On behalf of the Jewish Federations, I again thank you. And as a reminder, today is the day of Israel's independence, so we are celebrating it right outside this building. We invite you to come and join us between 12:00 and 2:00 at Thomas Payne Plaza to join in festivities and of course, with food, giveaways, and music. Zahav, the best restaurant in the United States, as we've just heard yet again, has created some special treats, so you've got to come out and mark the occasion with us. Supplies are limited, of course, because everyone's going to go there. We hope to see you soon. And again, thank you all for recognizing us today.
Council Biddies. Congratulations. Our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Thank you. Mr. Decker, will you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 190181, 190208, 190232, 190250, 190252, 190253, 190254, 190256, 190287, 190288, and 190289. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4707 Hawthorne Street, 237 West Thayer Street, 2923 North Orianna Street, 3415 Tampa Street, and 2901 North Sixth Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1901 through 09 North 33rd Street and 1911 through 15 North 33rd Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 805 North 40th Street and 818 North 40th Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District, which will be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" to define rear streets and to amend requirements related to parking and ground-floor commercial as they pertain to primary frontages and rear streets. And an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, bill number 170086, approved May 22, 2017, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Number 269 by Relocating Portions of the House Lines and Curb Lines of Convention Avenue from 34th Street to Health Sciences Drive and Placing on the City Plan Two Rights-of-Way for Drainage Purposes by Revising the Terms and Conditions Stated Therein and Extending the Period for Compliance Therewith, all under certain terms and conditions."
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communication?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President. I offered one bill this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 3400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Energy Conservation" to establish a solar panel incentive program.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill and one non-privileged resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, bill number 170086, approved May 22, 2017, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Number 269 by Relocating Portions of the House Lines and Curb Lines of Convention Avenue from 34th Street to Health Sciences Drive by revising the terms and conditions stated therein and extending the period for compliance therewith."
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 805 North 40th Street and 818 North 40th Street located in the 3rd Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. President. Today I offer two bills, one on behalf of the administration, the other on your behalf, and also two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" to define rear streets and to amend requirements relating to parking and ground-floor commercial as they pertain to primary frontages and rear streets.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 17th Street and Francis Street, Wellington Street and Jefferson Street, Thompson Street and North 16th Street, Parrish Street and Taney Street, North 23rd Street and Aspen Street, North 23rd Street and Brown Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring, congratulating, and recognizing Julia R. Masterman School Team for their 2019 Odyssey of the Mind state championship and wishing them success as world finalists at the Odyssey of the Mind international competition.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes...
And a...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Decker.
And a non-privileged resolution dissolving the Headquarters Hotel Tax Increment Financing District being the area generally bounded by South Penn Square on the north, Broad Street on the east, 15th Street on the west, and Chestnut Street on the south pursuant to the provisions of the Tax Increment Financing Act.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have two resolutions and one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by providing that no variance shall be granted to permit the multifamily use of a property located in certain defined single-family preservation districts.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Montgomery, former president and CEO of the Philadelphia Phillies, and recognizing his contributions to Major League Baseball and the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the 2nd Councilmanic District, which will be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Good morning. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4707 Hawthorne Street, 237 West Thayer Street, 2923 North Orianna Street, 3415 Tampa Street, and 2901 North Sixth Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have three bills for introduction this morning.
Read it. Refer to committee.
An ordinance approving the amendment to of the fiscal year 2019 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2020 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2018 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works including the supplying of funds in connection therewith.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution designating May 10, 2019, as World Lupus Day on which lupus organizations around the world call for an increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and congratulating Zahav Restaurant for being named Outstanding Restaurant in 2019 by the James Beard Foundation.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gitt.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have one bill for introduction cosponsored by yourself, Councilmembers Greenlee, Parker, Jones, and Johnson.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Landlord and Tenant" by adding a new section, 9808, entitled "Legal Representation in Landlord-Tenant Court", providing for access to free legal representation to the city of Philadelphia's low-income residents facing eviction in landlord-tenant court.
That will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today. Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of yourself and myself as co-sponsor, I introduce the following resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a zoning code review commission as an agency of city council to evaluate and recommend improvements to Philadelphia's zoning code.
For... That will be on next week's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions, co-sponsored by councilmembers Don, Squilla, and Tobenberger.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing May 18, 2019, as Armed Forces Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing the Fourth Annual Brazilian Day flag raising in Philadelphia as a celebration of Brazilian independence and Brazilian Day.
Also on today's calendar. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports on Committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, to which is deferred bill number 190353, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Philadelphia Department of Public Health on behalf of the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services whereby additional funds could be made available to city federally qualified health centers. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation."
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 190353.
Thank you. It has been moved properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190353. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports 12 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is deferred bill number 180950, entitled, an ordinance amending Section 12, 905, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permits for Curb Loading Zones to exempt businesses on streets with designated bicycle lanes from any fee for designation of a curb loading zone. And bill number 181009, entitled, an ordinance establishing a no truck parking and tow regulation on both sides of Decatur Road from Redline Road to Comley Road. And bill number 181046, entitled, an ordinance revising parking regulations for South Street from 21st Street to 27th Street. And bill number 190085, entitled, an ordinance granting permission to a licensed tour vehicle operator to operate on the west sidewalk of South Independence Mall West, formerly Sixth Street between Randsted and Chestnut Streets, the location formerly operated by Ride the Ducks Sight Seating Tours, and existing prefabricated metal ticket booth and merchandising kiosk with signage, including an electrical conduit with an electrical service line and a telecommunications conduit with a telephone service line in and under the public right-of-way. And bill number 190103, entitled, an ordinance establishing no truck parking and tow-away regulations on both sides of McNulty Road from Southampton Road to Townsend Road. And bill number 190104, entitled, an ordinance establishing no truck parking and tow-away regulations on Townsend Road. And bill number 190105, entitled, an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Ritter Street and South 12th Street, Comack Street and Moore Street, South 11th Street and Tasker Street, South 12th Street and Tasker Street, Moore Street and South 9th Street, Moore Street and South 6th Street, Moore Street and South 11th Street. And bill number 190121, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 194 by striking from the city plan the southerly 10-feet-wide portion of Burke Street from Howard Street to Hope Street. And bill number 190184, entitled, an ordinance adding a new chapter, 123400, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety on Roosevelt Boulevard, to provide for the use of automated cameras to determine speeding violations on Roosevelt Boulevard, and to establish a system of enforcement and administration. And bill number 190209, entitled, an ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on City Avenue between Havreford Avenue and 77th Street. And bill number 190210, entitled, an ordinance authorizing Fox Television stations to install, own, and maintain planters at 330 Market Street. And bill number 190255, entitled, an ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code relating to sidewalk sales by adding new provisions prohibiting sidewalk sales in the 10th Councilmanic District and making other conforming amendments. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of the 12 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the bills just read in the record by the chief clerk. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Labor and Civil Service, to which is deferred bill number 190315, entitled, an ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter, 94700, to provide protections for parking employees against wrongful discharge. And bill number 190316, entitled, an ordinance amending Section 9601 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Garages, Parking Lots, Sales Lots, and Sales Showrooms to add requirements for sufficient staff for parking garages, parking lots, and valet services. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills numbers 190315 and 190316.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 190315 and 190316. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from Committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman... There he is. Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I am here. And the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are bill numbers 190367, 190370, 190371, 180937, and 180976. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. You will be given three minutes to speak. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Thomas J. Smith, commenting on 190371.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have to leave the chambers. I like to be recorded as voting annual bills and resolutions moving forward.
And I think there may be one amendment also.
And amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Smith. I am the Chief Operating Officer for Moss Rehab, a nationally recognized leader in physical medicine and rehabilitation, and a proud member of the Einstein Healthcare Network. I'm here today to comment on Resolution 190371. Moss Rehab and Einstein are humbled by the response that we've received from Councilwoman Parker and the City of Philadelphia to our request to make the new accessible icon the citywide symbol for designating accessible parking for persons with disabilities and commend the city for taking this action. Moss Rehab and the Einstein Healthcare Network adopted the new action icon network-wide in 2014, and the people we are so privileged to serve, those with disability, express their overwhelming gratitude for representing the mobility, independence, and strength that they possess. We believe those feelings will now be experienced by countless others with disabilities who live in or visit Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. No Song Park...
Commenting on 170408.
Good morning, Council President Clough and members of the City Council. Today I am here in support of a resolution banning of the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through fifth grade. Of course, education is a very important community investment, but it should not be done at this expense of the businesses that our city depends on. My name is No Song Park, and my business, Liberty Gas Station, is located in District 9, Councilwoman Shirley Parker's district, Councilmember Parker. I urge you to support the legislation to repeal the beverage tax. I have been running this business for more than 30 years. We have about 25 employees, and this tax, sugar tax, is putting all that in jeopardy. The customers are all crossing over to Chiltonum Avenue, just one street across, and leaving their community to buy, spend their money for their product. And part of the problem is the tax is confusing the people. I can have two juice products that look like the same, but one is taxed, the one is not. Kind of diet drink doesn't have sugar, a tax. But chocolate milk that has contained sugar is not. Whatever, this kind of sugary tax hurt kind of small business in this city, most small business in this city. So I please, and even begging, please get rid of this kind of tax and energize small business in this city, and then booming the small business in this city. Then after that, repay more tax for this city. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your testimony.
Obona Haggins, commenting on 190242.
Good morning, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Obona Haggins. I'm going to be speaking about Resolution 190242, Resolution condemning the Trump Administration's proposal to eliminate funding for the Special Olympics. The Special Olympics for me has always been, you know, great to be able to see people who we look at as people who can, you know, walk standard. We look at them and we see, you know, in wheelchairs, maybe walking with a limp, maybe missing a leg. It's very exciting to watch what they can do. But I don't know if many of you know that there's an Americans with Disabilities Act which is supposed to provide reasonable accommodations for those with disabilities. And from what I understand, that... And let me just say this too, that Donald Trump is a distraction. When you mention Donald Trump after three years of him being in office, we already know what Donald was up to, right? But do you know that in Philadelphia, Philadelphia has the smallest disabilities office in the nation, the absolute smallest with the largest population of disabled people? So, yeah, I'm down with condemning Donald Trump, but I'm also down with lifting up the disabilities office in Philadelphia so that we can accommodate the disabled population in Philadelphia. Don't be distracted with politicians telling us to look at Donald Trump, because at the same time that they're telling you to look at Donald Trump, they're pickpocketing you. They're pickpocketing you while they keep focusing on Donald Trump who has been in office for three years. So I absolutely applaud the councilmen for wanting to address this and to condemn Donald Trump for cutting the funding. But we have to focus on Philadelphia. We are representing Philadelphians, and Philadelphians who are disabled deserve to be able to get on the sub at every single stop. They deserve to be able to get into buildings that we can all just walk into. My name, Obona Haggins. 5-8 is my number. Let's make Philly great.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony, sir.
Islam Sharif.
He's here. He's here. Yes.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Islam Sharif from Banfe for U2 Incorporated. We would like to speak on the bill...
Talk on the microphone.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Oh, sorry. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Islam Sharif in Banfe for U2, or we can go by Sharif. We'd like to speak on a bill 190367.
Okay. This bill is referenced to the Redevelopment Authority having given some more authority to issue properties. And I've been part of this city for 50 years. I've been a contractor for 30, and I haven't gotten one property. I'm a nonprofit organization as well, and I have filed over 300 properties and haven't been given any reconsideration. So I work for the Redevelopment Authority. I work for the housing authority. I work for PHDC as an inspector. So I'm saying that what do I have to do to be noticed and identified that my corporation, which I have two nonprofit corporations, haven't been considered for anything. But the point that we have to speak on, my daughter would like to read it out to you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, again. We currently... Yeah, thank you. Have a forum out... Hi, everyone again. We currently, yeah, thank you, have a forum out. If you might see our flyers hanging out, it's for Blahfe for You Two Incorporated. It just introduces us as a nonprofit corporation seeking to unite with other believers to present another clear opportunity to serve God. We want to print the idea to have churches in Philadelphia ring the church bells at certain times of the day to pray. With all the violence that takes place in the city of Philadelphia and in America, that this could be a good place to start. If we can choose four to five times a day for church bells to ring, and for people that could enter these church doors and just ask God for forgiveness, maybe there could be some type of resolution.
We want to just make this idea clear that we need the help of City Council, TV, radio, have public announcements that at certain times of the day, that the churches, being there's so much violence in churches, in the streets, will take a hold to this idea and actually ring church bells, and people will come to the recognition that maybe we should have an idea to stop what we're doing and make a concession to God and do His work. With this idea, we think that we can bring forth some forgiveness.
And hopefully for our future youth, we have our, my son, he's nine, out here passing out our flyers. We just want to make the city a safer place for everyone, honestly.
We thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate you being here.
Frank Crinity. Commenting on 180729.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Council, and all the councilpeople in this room over here. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's office for working with me on a bill of 180729 out there in the field, but Council President and I believe it's Green Lin. I'm bad in pronouncing names, I apologize. But I've been retired for a year and a half down in South Philadelphia, and didn't have nothing to do. But to keep occupied, I started a thing down in my own neighborhood, illegal dumping of all the trash, construction materials being dumped, not just in South Philadelphia, but throughout the city. Now, mind you, oh, by the way, I apologize. I want to thank Councilwoman Blackwell over there for giving me the twenty minutes last week in regards to homeless people. Now, going around in South Philadelphia and Southwest Philadelphia, I turned around and ran across to a homeless kid that I was taking pictures of illegal dumping of construction companies that keep dumping in our streets. They don't care where they dump it. And I'm glad that this bill was passed or introduced, or how it's, I don't know the legal end of it, but I work out there in the streets. I don't work, I volunteer for this work. I just want all neighborhoods, all neighborhoods of Philadelphia, of all this illegal dumping. And I hope that the bill passes where the penalty becomes three hundred to a thousand dollars for residential, one bag, two bags, whatever may be, and contractors, and I'm the one, and I'm the one who suggested it in Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's office, for that three hundred to a thousand dollar fine for individual that gets caught in surveillance cameras or whatever. I also wish that any contractor, which was in the news the other day of two contractors were dumping, illegal dumping in North Philly up there, I wish they would turn around and pass a penalty of five thousand to ten thousand dollars. So, this way, we give him, we give those people a kind of a sign that you're not going to dump in anybody's yard. I have three methods that I use, and that is, the first time, I give them a courtesy call or send them a letter. Am I able to, the second would be a three hundred to a thousand dollar fine, and the third, I'd like to ask the city to turn around all the dumpsters and just fill it up from the incinerator, and turn around and bring it to their house in front of their porch, see how they like it. You could not believe what some of the things that I found in that trash, in the trash bags, or throughout the city of Philadelphia, South Philly and Southwest Philly that I cleared, majority with the help of departments over here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Joe Dennehall. Commenting on 190367, 160720, and 190370.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is an official decree of the people. Remandamis quo larto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property of government, probably illegally. The Thirteenth Amendment states neither slavery nor involuntary servitude shall exist within the United States. Our council, mayor, governor, and others unanimously institutionalizing slavery and involuntary servitude, stripping my 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights and theft of my constitutionally guaranteed just compensation leaves me without the fruits of my twenty-eight years of payments. In Nazi Germany or Venezuela, people have no property rights. Fortunately, Franklin and others created a republic if we can keep it, restricted by the rule of law and requiring prosecution when officials look amongst yourselves and others are plundering the people. Why hasn't the Attorney General investigated and prosecuted by numerous viol? Why hasn't the state police, Philadelphia police, or the sheriff department arrested anyone? Clearly, this Rico-style conspiracy to deny rights exists, and immediate action is required. The Constitution requires immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, eighteen U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitutional Article One, Sections One through Twenty-eight, Twenty-six P.A. CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS, 1589, 65, 14133, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for twenty-five years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally complying government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to play a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution law be enforced, and jail is required for all violating oath constitution or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monument.
Thank you for your testimony.
Minal Raval commenting on 180976.
Good afternoon.
My name is Minal Raval. I'm here today to speak on two bills that are on the agenda. 181063 is about PGW's proposed LNG facility, and 180976, which authorizes the Philadelphia Energy Authority to purchase electricity, gas, and motor fuel for the city's needs. Neither bill considers the climate crisis and the need to rapidly transition to zero and low-carbon energy sources. I refer you to Resolution 170706, when council committed to meet or exceed the emissions reduction goals set by the Paris Climate Agreement. This is why we support the Office of Sustainability's Municipal Energy Master Plan to reduce and transition all of the city's energy needs to clean renewable energy. To support the Municipal Energy Master Plan, we have worked with Councilmember Reynolds Brown to introduce Bill 181067, asking for public hearings to discuss this transition. This bill has been in committee since last December. Yes, twenty-two percent of the city's electricity will be powered by solar from the Atom Solar Project, so that we'll need to purchase less dirty electricity. But I learned this week that this contract has yet to be finalized. And yes, our Office of Transportation and Infrastructure Systems is working to transition the city fleet to all electric vehicles, so that we'll need less motor fuel. And yes, our Office of Sustainability is working on energy efficiency for city buildings to reduce our gas heating usage, but I sense they're understaffed to take this on at the scale required. So, I ask that council schedule hearings about the Municipal Energy Master Plan as suggested by Bill Number 181067. I also ask that we hold Bill Number 180976 about municipal energy procurement until after this hearing about the Municipal Energy Master Plan. There can be no business as usual when we are in a crisis. Alternatively, we could revise Bill 180976 to include language to gradually reduce our purchase of electricity, gas, and gasoline or diesel, in line with the climate goals we are committed to. I also ask that council consider increasing the budget for the Office of Sustainability to take on the energy transition work that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Young. Commenting on 190367.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, good afternoon. I would like to speak on Councilman Clark and Councilman Greenly's efforts to move more of the development from the PRA to the neighborhoods. It's just something that I would like to say on your behalf, and I would just like to read something to you. Neighborhood development should include everybody. Philadelphia is finally referred to as the city of neighborhoods. A surge in new investment transforming communities to highly sought-after places to live, work, and play is not all a bad thing. But for the last fifteen years, multimillion-dollar development projects has not been fair. Longtime residents, businesspeople who have been committed to these neighborhoods have largely not been able to participate in the economic growth of their own community. Development has not been diverse and inclusive, and has been done by developers who do not live in these neighborhoods or look like the people in the neighborhood. I'm an African-American real estate developer, a long-life citizen of Philadelphia. I have started my business in my community, created entrepreneurial programs for local elementary schools. I still reside in the community that I grew up with. When I've had the opportunity to develop city land, I have made sure that it's affordable for working families. As a longtime minority business leader in West Philadelphia, I cannot outbid out-of-town multimillionaires for development opportunities in my city. My story is not unique, it is the reality of many minority developers in Philadelphia. Currently, Philadelphia Land Bank and the Redevelopment Authority bundle properties together that they control and offer them to the highest bidder. This may seem logical, but in fact, it is painfully short-sighted and unfair when recognizing small developers, particularly minority developers who lack the access to capital. Operating in the city this way reduces ability for small developers to build reasonable price and affordable projects in our neighborhoods. Look around, and you'll see the results. Luxury departments are going up in every community. The average Philadelphia cannot afford, the average Philadelphia cannot afford, the smaller local developers and minority businesspeople do not get a chance to participate in the economic development of these neighborhoods. Some city councilmembers, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Curtis Jones, Council President Darrell Clark, have been largely criticized, councilmembers have largely been criticized for trying to include local businesspeople, including myself, in the real estate development that's taking place in our communities. I applaud these efforts, and it is unacceptable to me, and should be unacceptable to everyone, that minority developments are scolded for seeking a seat at the table with larger developers. I challenge the city of Philadelphia to use its resources to create more of a fair opportunity for small and local developers to participate in the economic development in our neighborhoods. I would like to see more development done by local diverse developers with a local diverse workforce. Not all the neighborhoods, not all the neighborhood growth in Philadelphia should go to outside developers just because they have the biggest bank accounts. And some developing opportunities should be designated for local and minority developers. Allowing more local development, allowing more local developers to participate in transforming their own community has the potential to produce more thoughtful development, lasting benefits for community, more business role models, more community participation, more development dollars stays in the community for local folks. Neighborhood development in Philadelphia should include everyone.
Wrap it up. Thank you, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, now consider the bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar today. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190367.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey and conditional fees to full title. Does certain city own lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements around the city within the Thirty-second Ward of the City of Philadelphia?
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190367 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190370.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of 3217 Shelbourne Street located in the Seventh Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
Who prefers adoption?
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190370 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190371.
A resolution commending various private, not-for-profit, and governmental entities for adopting the accessible icon, and calling on the city of Philadelphia to utilize this logo for all new public works projects.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190371 is adopted. Mr. Decker. Sir, a title of 180937.
An ordinance amending Chapter 6200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Preventative Medicine to establish requirements for the testing of blood lead levels in children.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
President, I offer an amendment to Bill Number 180937, a copy of which has been circulated to all members of City Council. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. The amendment to Bill Number 180937 has been offered and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 180937 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar in next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180976.
An ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for use by the city in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years.
This bill has been placed on two separate occasions. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla is voting aye. Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Ayes are seventeen, and ahs are zero. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution honoring, congratulating, honoring, congratulating, and recognizing Julia R. Masterman School Team for their 2019 Odyssey of the Mind State Championship, and wishing them success as world finalists at the Odyssey of the Mind International Competition. Introduced by Councilman Greenly on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life and legacy of David Montgomery, former president and CEO of the Philadelphia Phillies, and recognizing his contributions to Major League Baseball and the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I want to also acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Adam Taubenberger, to say a few words.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you very much, and Councilman Johnson, thank you for this. I happen to have the opportunity to know Mr. Montgomery personally, and he was just a great human being, and honor him in this way in his memory, because he brought much happiness through sports, and he's one of the most genuine people that you could ever possibly meet. So, thank you, Councilman Johnson, and thank all colleagues for supporting this measure.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, I think, Councilman Heenan. Chair recognizes, I think, Councilman Heenan.
Mr. President, may I ask the sponsor for the vote count? We may rise for a standing count.
Thank you.
At the appropriate time.
Thank you. You made the motion.
I second it, Council President.
All right. We get a standing count on the vote. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designating May 10, 2019, as World Lupus Day, on which lupus organizations around the world call for an increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, education programs for health professionals, patients in the public, and worldwide recognition of lupus as a significant public health issue. Introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Zahav Restaurant for being named Outstanding Restaurant in 2019 by the James Beard Foundation. Introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
I move for the adoption, Council President.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May 18, 2019, as Armed Forces Day in the city of Philadelphia. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the Fourth Annual Brazilian Day Flag Raising in Philadelphia as a celebration of Brazilian independence and Brazilian Day. Introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the option of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Really, on your behalf, I'd like to notify the public that next week, May 16, is Vet Fest, Veterans Resource Fair, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Municipal Services Building, 1401 JFK Boulevard. There'll be food, entertainment, our good friend DJ Jerry Blavat. He'll be there, Frankie at the Fashions, and Quiet Storm awards to be presented, so please be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, it is again that time of year where members of City Council, unafraid, courageous, go out on that Skookkill River and represent this fine institution. Last year, in the Dadvale Regatta City Council's team, I made a bold prediction. I made a prediction that we would own last place, and I want you to know that we fulfilled that obligation and came in last place. I want to now give another prediction, that we will not have last place. Someone else can occupy that space. Because we started out with good rowers, such as Heenan, such as Gimm, but we had great rowers, such as Green, such as Fenton, representing Janie Blackwell's office, Councilwoman Bass, and now Angie, who rowed in college. So, we have a fighting chance to place this year, and I wanted all of us that are going to represent to don our uniforms, both past and present, both past and present, to come up. If you had enough heart to come out on the river, stand up here for a picture with us.
Oh, my God.
Oh, wait a minute. Representing Clark's office, Will Carter.
Oh, my God.
Oh, and Donna, Donna is well from our office. Mr. President, as you know, this is for a very good cause. We're out there braving the elements, but it's for urban kids to be able to have exposure to rowing and sculling in a year of a camp. Over 100 youth learned how, for the first time, to get on that river and hopefully row their way into some scholarship, college activity, or just a passion for the sport. So come out, support us at the Dadvale Regatta. We will not be last. We will not be last. We will not be last. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman, for that bold prediction. Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, and I'll say this in a way that my colleagues from the rowing team would appreciate, to Councilmember Jones, way enough.
Right.
That's inside joke for rowers.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President, I just wanted to commend my colleague, Councilmember Dom, and also Councilwoman Brown, for joining us this morning for the Third Annual Center City Proprietary Association Happy Hour Breakfast. We had a number of business owners from our city, and they were able to attend a Happy Hour Breakfast, which we had in Conservation Hall, and a number of them also attended our caucus session, and then a few actually came to our council session today. So it's another attempt to continue to do dialogue and do outreach with businesses, especially small businesses, that are providing jobs in our city. So I just want to thank my colleagues for participating in this third annual event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on behalf of myself, Councilmembers Green, Taubenberger, and Johnson, we want to take this opportunity to thank all members of council for supporting the resolution that supports the city of Philadelphia's adoption of a new icon for individuals with disabilities. For the benefit of people at home, this is what the new icon looks like, and we invite all of our colleagues to join us today at 2:00 p.m. in the parking lot behind One Parkway, which is actually 1515 Arch Street, enter off of the 16th Street side. And I just have to just state for the record that I want to thank Harry Barnum from Liberty Resources. He could not, he won't be there today, and he wasn't in council, but he has been a champion for individuals with disabilities. All of our colleagues know, we are used to seeing Harry seated right here to the right. You know, for those at home, if you watch it, you see him every week, and he's often talking to members of council about the impact that certain policies will have on people with disabilities. And I also need to say a huge thanks to Bill Ryan, Barry Friedman, and the entire Einstein Moss Rehab team. If it were not for you, this would not have been an issue that I was involved in, so I hope everyone can come and celebrate with us today. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I want to remind folks and thank Councilwoman Cindy Bass, who's Chair of Health and Human Services, and Councilman Squilla. At 1:00, we will be hosting a conversation with Joe Pyle from the Skattergood Foundation. Council President, in this council, we've been debating the issue of poverty, deep poverty, and trauma-informed issues all across the city. The Skattergood Foundation heard that, and they put together an index by council district that takes some critical factors into play. And if you haven't had an opportunity to meet with the Skattergood Foundation, please encourage your staff to attend the briefing at 1:00 in Room 576. I am told that because we're having lunch from Real Food Eatery, that this would mean something to peoples. I guess the food is good. But on the issue of the children, Philadelphia's children's health and well-being, the foundation dove down on some important data sets. They looked at school quality, they looked at park and recreation access, fresh food access, SNAP utilization, and children's behavioral health services utilization. Every single member will receive a packet that will have their district ranking, they will get the citywide information, it will talk about race and ethnicity, it will talk about language access, and a whole host of data sets that I think is hugely important as we continue to have this conversation about narrowing the gap in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President, for allowing us to have that. Room 576 at 1:00.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to wish all a Mother's, Happy Mother's Day weekend. That's it. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. That concludes our speeches, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Keanu Johnson just took me to a place. So, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 16, 2019, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.